So you're a good swimmer. You made it in good time. You're still tired, that's what it is.
It's time to start tonight's September 12th, 2022, Board of Selectment meeting held here in the Walk White Meeting Room at Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Grayneck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts, broadcast live on local KTV channel 18. I'd like to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could have a moment of silence. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Collins to give a statement.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe that there may be some folks interested in one of the articles on the draft warrant, or the possibility of an addition, I should say, which is the addition of wastewater Phase Two construction cost estimate using ARPA funds article. I just want to give the public, as well as obviously the board, a little overview. Currently, we have $2,146,982.27 in ARPA funds, of which $653,41.41 has to be used for the Phase One wastewater. The remainder can be used for any eligible item that the Select Board votes to fund. After consulting with the sewer consultant, Ray Jack, he has requested funding for an article of $350,000 for Phase Two. Now, this is specifically an article to look to fund a plan to evaluate, analyze, and cost estimate for Phase Two through Five. In addition, he has requested the town to find and to fund 1.2 million to support putting in alternate three on Contract One on Phase One of the project, which he can elaborate on. I just want to point out a couple things. The scope of Phase One has been scaled down from the town meeting article to meet the $54 million figure. Number two, the town of Mashpee put in a project evaluation form with Mass DEP and the State Revolving Fund for an additional $12 million to fund the remainder of Phase One. We anticipate requesting town meeting authorization and a ballot vote in May 2023. ARPA money is a grant and does not need town meeting authorization and does not affect our borrowing authorization on the $54 million. So the bottom line is, and I think if some folks had come to us, we would have explained this, but the 350 does not need to go to town meeting. It is a board decision. So my suggestion would be not to put it on the warrant. My suggestion would be to put it on your agenda for the next meeting. That's my recommendation.
Duly noted.
And it would obviously, as the assistant just whispered in my ear, it would move along a lot faster.
Sounds good.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask additional question?
Yes.
So you also mentioned the recommendation of the items that lack of, had a lack of funding. Would that also be under consideration for the next meeting?
Yes, we're going to give you a total overview.
Okay, thank you.
That sounds like a plan. If we could put those items on the next.
I just didn't want anybody to walk away, once that subject came up, with the wrong impression, in terms of why we're going to make that recommendation.
Okay.
So I wanted everybody to hear it.
Thank you for that. Accept a motion to approve the minutes from our Monday, August 8th, 2022 regular session meeting.
So moved.
It's time. Hearing of first and second, roll call, vote.
I'm sorry, August 22nd?
22nd.
August 8th, 2022.
We're on August 22. August 22nd.
That was a tight vote.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. That's the agenda, that's last month.
Motion to approve August 22, 2022 regular executive session meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, roll call, vote, Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
John? Thank you. Also, vote to approve. That motion passes. We'll go into public comment. We have several names here. We will ask people to stay within the three-minute timeframe. The first name on the list is Ken Dobrowski.
Hey, I'm back.
If you would state your name and your address.
Ken Dobrowski, 3 Grayfield Landing.
Thank you.
I'm here to talk about the residential tax credit. My understanding is you guys are going to be having to make a decision about this in a month or so, I believe it's sometime in October. I'm here to talk about why I think we should put the residential, or enable the residential tax credit, and why should we go, we should go 35.
Could you just put the mic a little closer to you? Thank you, sir.
I broke it, okay. Reclaim me my time. I've watched C-SPAN too much. So I want to start talking about the, this myth that non-residents don't use as many services as residents, though. In my view, we're the same, and in fact, I would argue that in certain aspects, they drive our costs base up. Let's, you know, start with the big gorilla first, the schools. Okay, it's 23 million, or just about a third of our total budget. Okay, the salient metric there is whether or not you have school-age kids, okay? I moved here 10 years ago, my kids are adults, I will never use the Mashpee school system. I fail to see how I am any different than a non-resident who doesn't use the Mashpee school system. And before somebody tells me that the non-residents pay for two school systems, that's their choice, okay? They knew that when they bought the vacation home. If it was unfair now, it was unfair back then, and you know something, they bought the house anyway. So again, that, that one's a push. The next big item is the fire and police, and they're a total of about 10 million bucks between the two of them, and that's about 15% of the total. And here you need to think about it in terms of the individual and on a macro level. On the individual level, you're not buying a service, you're buying access to the service, okay? I don't think I ever used the police department in the 10 years I've been here, but boy, do I want to know that they're there when you call them. So you're, you're, that 10 million is buying you access. Whether you use it or not is not the point, it's access. The other thing, too, is in terms of the macro level, okay, our population basically doubles, we're 15,000 full-time, and I guess, I think it goes to 60,000, 65,000 in the summertime. I don't have the data, but everybody, the police and fire department work for Mr. Collins, former police chief, I gotta believe we'd have more calls in the summertime than we do in the wintertime, okay? And when you're staffing and equipping a department, you don't, you staff for the peaks, you don't staff for the troughs. So again, you, you're, that, the summer residents are driving up that higher level, causes us for those addition, to allocate additional levels of resources. Infrastructure, you know, roads and sewers and stuff like that, same thing, you're buying access. And you know, oh, I'm not here in the wintertime. Well, you know, your property manager and the people working on your house are, so we do need to plow the road. And again, too, I mean, we were talking about the sewers. I mean, you know, would we have an nitrogen problem if our year-round population was, was 15,000? Yeah, probably. Would it be as big as it is? You know, probably not. But anyway, that's, I blew my, my three minutes, I'll be back in two weeks to finish up. You're not going to vote before that, are you?
Thank you.
Okay.
Next name on the list is? Next name on the list is Clayton Southworth.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so I'll be brief, the.
If you could state your name and your address.
Clayton Southworth, 203 Willabon Drive. So the reason for me being here tonight is the fill in the retaining walls and all those types of things in these flood zone areas. As much as I appreciate the environmental push, the sewer thing that you said is amazing, so that's, that's, that's music to my ears, because that's effective, that'll make a difference. This won't make a difference, but more importantly, I'm worried about safety. What happens when you cheap out, don't do a build wall, and you know, don't have a retaining wall, and grandma slips and dies, or a storm comes through and knocks this thing over because you couldn't bring in grade? You know what I mean? Like, structures need foundations, they need retaining walls, they need to have sound stuff, and that does mean bringing things in. So this is not just an environmental thing, this is a safety hazard. And I don't know how many lives have to be lost in order to make a really weak environmental effort, and I don't find that very tasteful. Beyond that is the value of things. So the taxes, and you know, I'm a real estate broker, and what I realize is that when you have these properties and then you rebuild them, you add value to them, which increases taxes, which increases contractors and the economy, and real estate brokers, and attorneys, and engineers, and all sorts of things. So when you do these types of rules, you're not just hurting people now, you're also taking food off of my daughters and their plate of food later on in life. You know what I mean? Like, it's an economic effect that trickles way down. So before deciding on all this stuff, I think we really need to understand what we're doing, how it's affecting safety, how it's affecting our livelihoods, and then make a really informed decision. And most importantly, let's do something that works for the environment, like the sewer, so that there's better ways to do things that protect property rights. That's what I asked for. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next name on the list is Karen Faulkner.
So this was the presentation we talked about? It's going to be more than three minutes?
David.
This is a presentation that.
Do we want it later or now?
Yeah.
I think you should wait.
Yeah, because this was a presentation.
We're going to wait.
Yes.
You want us to wait?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have you contributing to a line item later in the agenda.
Yes, I didn't know whether we'd go now or at that time.
No, you're later. Sorry.
And I assume, Mary, your sign is piggybacking that. I'd like to ask Michaela Columbo to come, come to the mic.
Michaela Columbo, Meadowbrook Drive, from Meadowbrook Road. I have a statement that I would like to read into the record. First, I'd like to recognize the extensive work and expertise of the town planner, and we'll see that in a few minutes, the Conservation Commission Agent, and the Director of Natural Resources in putting together warrant articles to protect public safety and to improve the quality of our waters. These are our experts, and I would ask that the Select Board listen to these experts. I'd also like to recognize the productive and collaborative work of our planning board. For the purpose of public safety, to prevent public emergencies due to water pollution, to eliminate costs associated with response and cleanups of floods, and to protect our waters, I ask the Select Board to recommend the approval of Article 10 as written on the town warrant. This warrant article will repeal the current Article 11 floodplain provisions and replace it with a new Article 11 floodplain overlay. This article merits approval in its entirety, including prohibiting the use of fill in the flood zone, or the floodplain overlay. I ask that this board act on science and act on the expertise of our town employees and the planning board. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Alan Isbitz.
Thank you. My name is Alan Isbitz, and I live at 261 Fellis Pond Road.
Hello.
I am the Chair of the Affordable Housing Committee, and I want to recognize also that my Vice Chair, Noah Pina, is here tonight with me. With all due respect, Chairman Whedon, I want to express my disappointment that the appointment to fill the vacancy on the Affordable Housing Committee was taken off the agenda tonight. We have worked diligently in the last few days since we had our meeting on August 30th to correct the error in our interview procedure at our June meeting, and I believe we accomplished that purpose flawlessly. We had only three days after the meeting, on August 30th, to formalize our meeting recommendation and submit our interview in time for this meeting, and we accomplished that purpose at the expense of our personal evening time and some family obligations, because we believe this is an important step in the committee's efforts to address the town's affordable housing crisis at the level and with the priority it deserves. I want to emphasize as well that the committee voted four to zero unanimously to recommend Gary Schuman to be the person to fill this position. In the light of the public disclosure surrounding this decision, we did not do this lightly, but out of a well-reasoned professional judgment that this is in the best interests of the, of the committee and in the pursuit of an effective affordable housing program for the town. It seems to me that as the Affordable Housing Committee Chairperson, that imposing a delay in this matter sends an inappropriate message that the affordable house, that affordable housing is not the dire priority we all know it to be. So it is with humility and some regret that I need to ask you, when can this committee expect this appointment to be made? And I would hope that there is some way to reconsider that and put it on tonight's agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ken Masters.
I'm Ken Masters, 77 Bay Shore Drive. I'm here to talk about the buffer zone and vegetation strip, part of the warrant, the articles. Right now, in, I'm going to put it in different terms from what you read and when you read it. Right now, you can build up to 50 feet. They're recommending right now that you can, one, bring that back 25 feet. So by bringing it back 25 feet, from what I read in the paper, because I haven't had any discussion with anybody, that pretty much kills 50 lots. Now, these are 50 individuals, they're not 50 rich people that can build McMansions, these are 50 people that have had these lots forever. They should be congratulated, they haven't built on these lots yet. They're not the ones that are doing the polluting. Now, you, if you take that 2,500, that 25 feet, multiply times 100 feet, which is the average width of the lot, you come up with 2.87 acres. You're going to save 2.87 acres for the wildlife. We have 14,894 acres in the town of Mashpee right now. Who are these 50 owners? They're not here because they don't even know about it yet, they don't read the paper, not everybody reads the Mashpee Messenger, not everybody watches the Selectmen's meetings. I only found about it because I read the Mashpee Messenger, I'm one of the people that does read it. What's the motivation behind this? Is it no build? Is it to take land from people? Some of these people have lots, they may have mortgages on them. They may have a $200,000 mortgage. A regular lot in Mashpee, which is ridiculous, is $250,000. So if you take any lot, and say they bought it and they have $150,000, $1,000 mortgage on it, they, how are they going to pay it back? It's just crazy. And these lots are serviced by town, the town water, they'll be serviced by town sewer. If it's the nitrogen we're worried about, put a denitrification system in, you're fine. Don't take the people's land. I have a letter here from Concom, they wanted to buy some of my lots because of this issue. This is a year ago, from an assistant Concom agent. And I said, you know, I'm not ready to sell at this time, at this time, that's the key word. So what did they do? Seems to be like they wrote an article and they can say, tough luck, Ken, you won't give it to us? We'll take them from you. That is just not fair, that's not America, I'm sorry. And what is the big impact on the environment on this, 2.87 acres? What's the impact of nitrogen into the, into the waterways if we're doing denitrification systems and/or if we do town sewer? There'll be no McMansions, as a matter of fact, this is going to cause bigger homes, because what the builders will do is they'll take, or the homeowners, they'll take a smaller footprint, they'll go up to the second floor, because I haven't built a second floor house since 2004. Now they go up to the second floor, and this 2,000 square foot ranch will be a 4,000 square foot McMansion. So it does the exact opposite of what they're trying to accomplish. How many existing homes is it affect? And I can ask you each individually, and I know the answer, and it's sort of facetious, but if you knew somebody who owned one of these lots, and they're all regular people, they're not the big bad guy, there aren't many big bad elephants in the room like me, and I've been a builder for 36 years, but I have not developed a piece of property for 36 years. Would you vote for this article, whether it affected you or one of your loved ones? I don't think so. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Susan Dangle.
Good evening, Susan Dangle, 762 Katuut Road. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Actually, my comments tonight appear to be moot based on Mr. Collins's explanation of the fact that we don't need to put sewer funding on the town warrant. However, I just want to remind you that last November, you all attended a roundtable discussion that I felt was a very impressive exchange of ideas, with all of the participants that night agreeing that across all of the boards, collaboration was the key. And notably, you all agreed that the time to fund things is now. Never has, have we had, in fact, I think you actually might have even said, that never have we had such abundant and available funds with the, with the ARPA funds. So I do hope that in two weeks' time, you all agree to fund Mr. Jack's proposals as he describes them. And thank you for that. I also wanted to turn to something that we found, we were planning our Mashpee Wakebee Pond Alliance Splash event yesterday, and in which I am extremely proud to say that Chairman Whedon, Chairman Wagan, the Director of Natural Resources, Ashley Fisher, and Sewer Commissioner Vice Chair, Meredith Harris, all swam 2.5 miles to support clean water. It was a really amazing event, and our town leadership could not be more present yesterday. Thank you so very much. So proud of you, David. But while I was getting ready for that event, I also came across this Orleans Blue Pages that AAPCC gave to us at a Cape Cod Ponds Network meeting. This publication is slick, it's clean, it's great, it talks to people in towns about what they can do for water, why it's important, how estuaries work, how groundwater works, why we're doing all the things we're talking about. It was printed in 2008. I was desperate to find maps from Mashpee that would be included, that I could add to this, this booklet, and come to find out, y'all printed it. The Mashpee Blue Pages in 2011. And I understand that this Blue Pages was sent to every resident in town. It's a phenomenal book. I urge you to find the funds again, to update this, and get it out to everybody as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I may butcher this name, Chuck Gassier.
Good evening. Chuck Gassier, 186 Dunrobin Road. I want to speak about the seal. When I first came to Mashpee in 2000, 2000, I came down 151 toward the rotary, and I saw the only not, other thing other than the trees and grass was a flagpole by two-inch diameter pipe, rusty, with a little flag on the top. I said, oh my goodness, we, we deserve more than that. And so in 2004, I'm passing around to you how the three flags that are presently in the, on the, on the rotary came about, which included the United States flag, the State of Massachusetts flag, and the Wampanoag tribal flag. Seeing that seal up there is spectacular. And I suggested to Catherine and Mr. De Sorge that maybe we should have a fourth flagpole with that seal on it. Now, I know the seal is basically a decal, but in talking to Mr. De Sorge, it's possible that we could make it into a flag. And I think that would be appropriate, to have that on, on the rotary. And I would be willing to pay for the flagpole if you give it approval. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that. Next, we have Richard DeSorge.
Before we start, Mr. Chair, folks in the back, we've got to make sure that the exit is not blocked.
If you could pull your chairs around to the sides, that would be helpful.
Sorry, Mr. Chair.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Richard DeSorge, 65 Shields Road. I just wanted to follow Chuck, just to give some support for his ideas. First of all, he's being incredibly generous that he's willing to donate the additional flagpole. And as he said, this town seal is just so beautiful, and it really represents so much that is Mashpee, that if we did turn that into a flag, not only could we have that at the flagpole at the Rotary, which name I'll get to in a second, but also, I think the public buildings in town, the schools and stuff would have the flags, as we have the state and Wampanoag flags here. As you know, in 1985, that Rotary was officially named Pine Tree Corner, along with Main Street being officially named, and Great Neck Road North, Great Neck Road South. There's not many people, unless you have lived in Mashpee for a long, long time, that perhaps know that that's Pine Tree Corner, just not the Mashpee Rotary. And that, some way we can think of to put signage there. Selectman Cotton came to our Historical Commission meeting, and we talked about that issue, and he brought up, which we agreed with, the issue that you put signage there, that's a very busy Rotary, you're talking some safety issues. But maybe we come up with something if that fourth flagpole is put in there, some type of nice wood sign in front of that, or something that we can meet the safety standards and still get across what the official name of that Rotary is. Without a sign, as new people move in, you're not going to know that. But I just want to commend Chuck for his generosity in donating that and getting those three flagpoles to be put there in the first place.
Thank you, Richard.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Most of us are not builders, contractors, or developers. We're just Mashpee residents who want to protect the environment from more pollution and degradation. Clean waters are the lifeblood of the town's culture and economy. Therefore, it's mind-boggling that some members of the Select Board would consider not supporting a proposed amendment to the floodplain bylaw that would prohibit putting fill in the floodplain because it threatens to flood surrounding residents and degrades our waters. The proposed amendment does not make lots unbuildable, as the Planning Board fact sheet explains. It simply protects the 2,455 properties in the floodplain from construction-caused flooding and its many bad consequences. All Mashpee residents are now paying for problems caused by lack of infrastructure created by the building boom of the 1980s. We don't need to repeat this history. There is no rational argument for supporting the profits of a few over the welfare of the vast majority of residents and of Mashpee's environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Seth Starfregan. I hope I didn't pronounce that right.
Esteemed members of the Board of Selectmen, thank you for your service to the community. My name is Seth Starfregan, and I live at 52 5E Riverview Avenue. I live on the Santuit River. I have eagles in my backyard. It is spectacular, I have to tell you. Back in 1970, the first Earth Day happened, and I was a young man, and I was very excited about the prospect of trying to work to make the environment a better place. In the last 50 years, our leaders have shown very little leadership, and we are in a very dire circumstance with global warming, massive pollution. And the reason I want to talk to you tonight is to encourage you that we need to do something very proactive, that we need to take a real leadership role here. And I'm asking that we create a moratorium until sewers are fully operational for all development in sensitive areas, that the pollution that we have right now is getting worse and worse and worse. It's not getting any better, and it's going to take a long time to clean this up once we finally do have sewers. So I ask that we have some sort of a moratorium. The second thing I want to ask the board is, there's a lot of money, federal funds, state funds, available that we aren't going to be able to tap into because we don't have a grant writer. I think the town needs to hire a grant writer. That position would be paid for in a matter of months, and there's a lot of money out there that could be realized for sewer development or for whatever we need, that this is a real opportunity. And I think there's a lot of low-hanging fruit out there that we could get. So I encourage you to think about hiring a grant writer. Thank you.
The last name on the list, but not least, is Alexander Jackson.
My name's Alexander Jackson. My neighbor just spoke. I'm a resident of the Katuut Bay condominiums, built in the 80s. The setbacks have proved to be inadequate for the wetlands. We have significant problems. If we go forward and maintain the same setbacks on wetlands, we're going to continue to have problems. And no one's really said that the sewer project is perhaps a decade in the making. And so it's going to be a long time before we get mitigation from that enterprise. So it's important that, all of you know, you've seen the statistics on the algae blooms, on the cyanobacteria, on the continued problems with warming waters and increased pollution. I'm very pleased that they did a nice swim. We have to keep our waterways clean, and it will help to increase the setbacks for further development. It will not particularly affect those people who will be grandfathered, and it'll particularly affect people who want to build grass right down to the waterways and then pollute it with pesticides. So I want to speak in support of extending the setbacks around the wetlands going forward. Maybe after 10 years, when we have the sewer in place, maybe we can ease those restrictions up. But it doesn't make sense to do it now. That's all I'd like to say.
Thank you, Alexander. I would like to say at this time, you know, just to maintain order of our meeting, I ask that folks refrain from heckling or making any outbursts during the rest of the remainder of the meeting and future meetings. We do want to be civil and respect each other's differences and opinions, and this is going to be expected of everyone involved. Thank you. Moving on, we are going to go to the discussion and approval of the following special events applications. The first one on the list is the RUC for, what's that acronym?
RUC for Hit.
RUC for Hit.
Heroes in Transition.
We didn't ask anyone to come in for this. This is an annual event. At this time, I take a motion to...
Cindy Jones.
Cindy Jones. Did you want to come up and speak to this? No? I didn't ask that you were required to because it's an annual event.
Given opportunity, advertise.
Heroes in Transition is very grateful to the town. The town of Mashpee has supported us ever since we lost our son. And the RUC for Hit is our biggest fundraiser event, and we help thousands of veterans here on the Cape, and especially on Joint Base Cape Cod. The not-so, the event that's coming up in the last weekend, September, weekend, is not as big as our RUC race, but it is also a very supportive fundraiser for us, and we would appreciate and would love to have your support with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. At this time, I take a motion to accept and approve the RUC for Hit, taking place on Friday, September 30 through Sunday, October 2, 2022, from 12 to 12:00 p.m.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, roll call vote. Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
David, yes. The motions unanimous and passes. Thank you and good luck on a safe and productive event. The next one, we have the Orange Shirt Day. This one is a new event, so I've asked one of the representatives, Joanne Frye, Nancy Rose, to come forward and speak to the event.
Hi, Joanne.
Hello.
Hi, I'm Joanne Frye.
She's the OVC coordinator.
I'm the OVC coordinator, yeah, OVC coordinator for the Mashpee-Wampanoag Tribal Courts. OVC is Office of Victims of Crimes.
And I'm Nancy Rose, and the court administrator for the tribal court.
Both of which are residents.
Yes.
I will add.
Oh, yeah. Katuut Road. Main Street Mashpee.
Yeah, if you could just give a little background, this is a new event, so I'd like to educate everyone as to what we're trying to do here, what the goals of your group are.
We're looking to be at the Mashpee Rotary. The event is from 5:30 to 6:30. You know, we have people standing out there with signs honoring the Orange Shirt Day, which is a program where on September 30 of every year, how to put it, the Canadian First Nation Residential Schools, if you remember last year in May, they found 215 children's graves while they were digging up and in old building, school, residential school, I'm sorry. And since then, there's been over 1,000 and different residential schools in Canada and United States where they have dug up bodies of these children. So on September 30, every year, they have what they call Orange Flag Day, Orange Shirt Day, I'm sorry. And it was started by one child, six-year-old child, that went to school with an orange shirt that her grandmother bought her. And when she got to school, the nuns took it from her and never gave it back to her. And they didn't care. She was very upset. The children cried because they took her shirt, and they never cared. And from that point, they wanted that remembrance, to people to remember what happened. And then, like I said, last year in May, May 28 is when they found the first mountain of children in there, and they collaborated the two together because it was still part of the residential school that they went to, that these children were found from. So what we're looking to do is to allow 215 flags, orange flags, to be set up on the Rotary. And we have five banners that will be going around Rotary that says, Orange Shirt Day.
And it also says, Every Child Matters.
Yes.
Those are the two logos that are for Orange Shirt Day in remembrance of the children that have passed from neglect and abuse in Indian residential schools.
We already met with the Mashpee School Systems. They're collaborating with us, and they are going to put out activities for the schoolchildren to learn about this program and ask them to wear orange shirts that day to school on September 30, along with our tribal children, too.
Did anyone have any questions?
Yeah, I mean, I have one. Is this the same signs that, so the event's September 30?
Yes.
Are the signs already in the Rotary?
Yes. We were told they can put them in.
Yeah. Someone I spoke to on the phone, I'm not sure who the gentleman was, last week, said that he would see, there's no problem with us putting the signs up. And I explained to him that they would be going up, you know, as soon as we got them. So he said he didn't think there would be a problem with the signs. It was, the problem would be more in people being on the Rotary and stuff. So we thought it would be okay if we went ahead and put the signs up. Maybe I misunderstood.
I just noticed it because I noticed it today, and again, I'm totally understanding the, so don't take it as, I'm a mean person, but I have to do my job and just mention it.
Mr. Taylor, could you?
That's right. I mean, we were going to say, well, maybe we misunderstood him when he said that we could, you know, he wouldn't see a problem with that, but...
I'm sure there was a misunderstanding, John, because you did talk to me.
Oh, okay.
And when we discussed it, we discussed the ceremony not being inside the Rotary because of the fear of people being injured or safety. And then I said that I don't think the Board of Selectmen would have a problem with you putting the flags in the Rotary, but that was a decision that they would have to make. It's not something I can make that decision for, because the board has to make that decision. So, and I wasn't aware of the banners at the time. I knew there were 200 and something flags, but I was not aware of the sign. So I was surprised when I heard, because we had discussed this. So that's where it came from. And it, you know, it was probably a misunderstanding. I'm not saying that they're wrong, but that is not how I phrased it. I want to make sure the board was aware of it, and I felt like you folks would not have a problem with the flags, but that you would have to come here to get permission to do it.
So typically, what's the allowance for signs or flags to be put out prior to an event?
There is a timeframe, and I don't recall off the top of my head what it is, but it's outlined in the policy.
Do you recall?
Seven days, I think. Five days is a normal...
And then typically, they're supposed to be taken down like the day after?
It's the board policy. You can waive it if you choose to.
Okay.
And then, I mean, I get, I love the, I do like the display of flags and the little tribute. I mean, inside the Rotary, it's, I also want to be concerned about the safety when you, the banners and people not seeing it. What you probably see, you experience, I experience all the time, is people just like literally get confused and they just stop on the Rotary. I've seen it happen a few times this summer. That's concerning when, so signs pop up, low-hanging flags, again, it's not typical, but I do like that. I've seen it around all over Cape. There's all these different, out of respect. I think that's a nice thing to do. So I don't...
Can I ask a question?
One second. Tom Minners?
I think we've seen a lot of folks come before us for these types of requests, and they're usually a nonprofit group, or it's a group that's trying to sponsor an occasion that they're trying to inform the public about. After hearing this, I mean, I don't know of anything that's more powerful than what these ladies just described. So I think if we could enhance the time a little bit for the purposes of educating the public and getting the word out in terms of what this stands for, I think it makes us a better community.
Appreciate that.
I agree.
Tom?
Yeah.
Do you have any other questions?
No, I don't. Safety is my primary concern with the signs as well, but I think it's a great idea, and I support it. I really do, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do have tribal police that's going to be there as well, working with us, Kevin Frye and Curtis Frye. But we're also looking today, Nancy and I said that would it be more of a problem if we put the banners on the islands?
So let's, what do you suggest that we can put the banners, that it...
I think that the signs are out there now. We're willing to give a pass on that, but I don't know that I'd put out anything else until a week prior. Is that my understanding, the recommendation?
I think, if I could, Mr. Chair, I think a little extra time is, is what we would recommend, if that's okay by the board. What I would further suggest, just a recommendation, is that we work with these folks tomorrow to get this resolved. I think the place for the flags is in the Rotary. The place for the banners may be another location, and you direct us to work with these folks to resolve this, and let us work this out. And as long as we're acting under the authority of the board, then we're all set.
I fully support that recommendation. I hope that the rest of the board agrees, that we, you know, you walk, work closely with the Town Manager's Office to identify specific locations for banners. Ken, did you have something?
They're welcome to put those banners in front of my building if they'd like to, right in front of Prime Center, which is a great location.
So if you take that into consideration?
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the only thing I have a concern with is you're not going to have people inside the Rotary, are you?
Can I speak on that?
Sure.
So I am the one that put on the Mashpee Messenger on social media, why don't we have Black Lives Matter? And you see what happened with that. All I did was put it on there, and it just got hundreds of people there. It was very peaceful. I didn't even know it was going to take off like that. So we are, we're hoping, and we think we're going to get a lot, a lot of people. We will try our best, because I do agree, safety is most important.
Safety. Inside that Rotary is dangerous.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I could see that, that day, and I was really nervous.
And I'm sure you're going to have families there, so that is a concern.
Oh, we're going to have a lot of people, and it's open to non-natives, everyone.
Right. I would rather have you around the Rotary instead of in it.
Yes.
And that people look at the flags all in your Rotary.
So if it gets to the point where it's that big, and we can't control it... See, that's, yeah, because we can only, I mean, just like when we had Black Lives Matter. I was really nervous. I got a call from Mashpee PD. They were off-site but ready. I had the chief's cellphone if anything happened. Only thing they're asking is, hopefully, everyone is, got safety in mind. We're looking for support on this. We'd like to do this once a year, September 30th of every year, because this is, it's big. It's national, and it hurts of what happened, the abuse and neglect and the murder of our children. And every child matters. So that's, we'd like to really just get it off right.
And Mr. Masters has offered.
Parking. Right, you're welcome to use my parking behind my building.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
That was my next point I was going to bring up. You do have existing businesses there at the Rotary. So I, you know, parking would be a problem, so that was awesome. The timing was perfect on that, Kenny. And, but not to inhibit the, interfere with the business, the operation of the businesses. And it's such a tight Rotary, you know, it's a tough job, I mean, to...
I think it's 5:30. It's going to, most of the businesses are closed.
Yeah, we put in the permission, four to seven, only because we figured people were going to start coming, and, you know, we want people out.
So it'll be more late evening?
But it's really 5:30 to, it's like an hour to 6:30. And we said to seven, even though we're hoping to get everybody out at 6:30, before sunset, you get stopped. We just want to make sure we can make sure everybody's got their signs, they cleaned up their mess, there's nothing there. So we said seven.
Just work with the manager's office, and they can...
Right. We also already got permission from the picnic box to park there, because they close early. Waiting on Smithy's to make sure there's no problem. But we do have a drum that's going to perform once, and we weren't sure if they would be able to do it on the circle or if, we need them to, see if we can put them in another area, maybe. We want to talk to the real estate company.
Off, so Rotary. They're inside the Rotary.
Right.
Inside the Rotary is too...
I think, I think everyone's very concerned about the safety, you know, especially where there's going to be families and different age kids and stuff, you know, trying to coordinate, getting on and off of the Rotary is kind of dangerous. I think 30th is a Friday evening.
It's a Friday, 5:30 at night.
So, you know, that adds to kind of some of the concerns. So, you know, I, at this time, I'd like to ask for a vote to approve the Truth and Reconciliation Event, Orange Shirt Day, hopefully to be an annual event, as this is something coordinated throughout the United States and Canada, as a coordinated effort to raise awareness on the atrocities that happened with the residential schools in the 18th and 1900s. I'd accept a motion at this time.
With, and with the Town Manager to work out the details.
Coordination with the Town Manager's.
Yeah, motion approved.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, roll call vote. Carol?
Yes.
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 David, yes.
Thank you.
And next year, if you could just, in advance, plan to get the, you know, bring something before us for approval, and allow time for coordinating signage and things in advance, so that, you know, it's a regular event, and there's no further trouble.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
At this time, if the clerk wishes to read the National Suicide Prevention Month Proclamation?
You clerk?
I'll read it, Tom.
Did you want to read?
Oh, I didn't.
Yeah, I'll take yours. Thanks. So, and, this is the letter, it's the National Suicide Prevention Monthly Proclamation. Whereas September is known as Suicide Prevention Month, a time in which mental health advocates, individuals, prevention organizations, survivors, allies, and communities around the country unite and promote suicide prevention awareness. And whereas the past year was precedent, presented our communities with challenges and led to transitions that accept or unaccepted, welcome or not, can be unsettling, disorientating, and stressful. And whereas the pandemic has changed our fabric of life, and major life changes, and environmental risk factors for suicide, and whereas we know that connecting, working with, and supporting one another can help prepare us for future, and whereas, according to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, AFSP, suicide is the 12th leading cause of death among adults, and the second leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of 20 and 34 in the United States. And whereas nearly 46,000 people died in suicide across the United States in 2020, with an average of 130 suicides completed and daily. It's a big number. Whereas each suicide directly impacts a minimum of 100 additional people, including families, friends, and coworkers, neighbors, and community members. And whereas local organizations like the Cape and Island Suicide Prevention Coalition encourage all residents to take the time to understand the importance of mental health education, and recognize that taking care of ourselves and others includes taking care of mental health. And whereas, the town of Mashpee publicly places its full support behind those who work in the field of mental health, education, and law enforcement. Whereas all Mashpee residents are urged to play a role in suicide prevention and promote mental health and wellness as we strive towards reducing suicides. And whereas September is recognized across the United States as Suicide Prevention Month, and provides the opportunity to educate our community about the warning signs for suicide, and how to reach out and connect to those experiencing an emotional crisis. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Mashpee Board of Selectmen do hereby proclaim the month of September 2022 as National Suicide Prevention Month in the town of Mashpee. And I hope that if anybody is listening, that they take the time to reach out to others, and if you feel in trouble, reach out to the town, reach out to the Selectmen. We're all there for you, especially in times of need.
Having lost a sibling to suicide, this is something near and dear to my heart. I want to thank the Cape and Island Suicide Prevention Coalition for the work that they do, and ask for a motion at this time to vote to accept and approve the National Suicide Prevention Month Annual Proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, roll call vote. Tom?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes. That's unanimous and approved. Thank you. Resignations, discussion of approval of resignation. We have before us a resignation from the Council on Aging, Mario Gornis, letter of resignation.
A motion to accept his resignation with a letter of regret.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, all those in favor, roll call vote. Tom?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm a yes. This brings us to old business, oh no, new business, rather, discussion of adding, removing, amending articles from October 17th, 2022, annual town meeting warrant. So the first one is the removal of Article 16, Chapter 172, the Wetland Bylaw Amendments as per Conservation Agents Memo. In the memo from Drew McManus, it does give some background as to, you know, needing to further review and have more public discussion on the matter. There's some additional matters that need to be considered with that, and so it's been advised and recommended by both the Conservation Agent, Drew McManus, and I believe Ashley Fisher also recommended to withdraw this article until future time, hopefully the spring town meeting, and to work through that process with public input and discussion. I'd accept a motion to withdraw the article at this time.
Article 16.
For the record, it's Article 16 on the top of page 18.
Chapter 172 Wetland Bylaw Amendments.
Was that a motion? Second?
Second.
Hearing of first and second, roll call vote. Tom?
Yes.
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 David, yes. The motion was unanimous and passes. Next one is the addition amendment to the Article 10, the floodplain overlay as per Town Planner's Memo. Now, this is the one we were going to ask for the presentations from, so if Karen Faulkner and Mary Wagan would please step to the podium and microphone.
I am Mary Wagan, Chair of the Planning Board.
Karen Faulkner, Vice Chair of Planning Board.
Our town planner can't be with us tonight, so we're pitch-hitting. And, hi, I'm Mary Wagan. I'm the, can you hear me via the microphone now? Thank you. And I'm Mary Wagan, Chair of the Mashpee Planning Board. And again, Karen Faulkner is the Vice Chair. And unfortunately, our town planner, Evan Lair, can't be here tonight, so we're pitch-hitting. We don't have a presentation about that specific memo, but we did have one about the articles. So can I start with showing Evan Lair's public service announcement?
Well, wait, wait.
Sure, yes, please.
Oh, sorry, go ahead. Yeah. Okay, I, again, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for giving me sufficient time to present the facts about this proposed bylaw. There's been a lot of misinformation spread about concerning it, and hopefully I can clear this up. And good evening, Town Planner, excuse me, he always sits in that seat, Town Manager and Assistant Manager. Yes, Evan is not here tonight, and for brevity, I'm going to call the proposed floodplain bylaw just bylaw. By unanimous approval, the Planning Board submitted it to you, to the Select Board, for consideration, and hopefully it'll go to town meeting on October 17th for a vote. It takes a two-thirds vote, is my understanding. So Evan is not here, and he's written a very nice public service announcement for Mashpee TV to educate us all on the proposed planning board. You need to know that there will be a public hearing on this proposed floodplain bylaw, bylaw, on September 29th at 7:15 PM in this room. The bylaw, if passed, will replace entirely the town's current floodplain zone provisions. The proposed bylaw is mandatory for Mashpee to remain in the National Flood Insurance Program. We have 537 Mashpee policyholders in this program, and in addition to getting federal-backed insurance, they can get disaster assistance and discounts on their insurance if the town goes beyond the minimum requirements. Basically, this floodplain proposed bylaw is all about changing administrative regs and requirements, rules and regs. The most significant new regulations for this are rules that pertain to building and conservation departments. So in drafting this bylaw, we, we, the Planning Board, and Evan Lair, want to go above the minimum standards by adding one very small, we believe, change to this development, to this floodplain development bylaw. The bylaw change is that we want to prohibit the filling, which would be soil, rocks, loam, sand, in the floodplain when we develop. This is really not a significant change, because no one's development rights have been removed. Developers still have the ability to build on columns or in solid wall foundations with floodvents. And I'll show you some pictures on that afterwards. The Planning Board believes that if we prohibit the filling of the floodplain in the development, it will be a prudent restriction which will mitigate the impact of torrential rainfall causing storm runoff, stormwater runoff into the streets. It's my understanding from having spoken, having given a talk at Pompano Beach Association the other day, that they spent $40,000 in remediation to fix drainage issues, which has been a big problem down there. And the genesis of this floodplain was because of the flooding of the streets and in some cases, houses. cases houses, basements, which are not allowed anymore. They were, they are no longer allowed after the Building Code came in, but there are houses, little houses down there that have basements. So some of them got flooded, and it's in measure, large measure, caused by these houses built on fill. We've had numerous complaints from residents in Pompanesett stating their streets flooded because they live next door to a house or near a house on fill. Now, let me just explain a little bit about fill. This has been an education for me, and I know it's a little heavy duty, but it honestly makes sense when you really start studying it. By putting fill in the floodplain to build a new house or redevelop an existing house, we destroy the natural floodplain. We've now put a mound of compacted dirt, and what usually happens is it's like perhaps five feet high, wrapped with a retaining wall. Now, there would not be any flood vents there because you can see that the soil, the dirt that's compacted could start slipping out. So that's what that is. And how does, you know, the question exactly, does a natural floodplain help to lessen flood risk? By not putting fill, not building something up on fill. Okay, when rainfall hits the street or the roofs or the ground, it does one of two things. Either it's going to leach into the ground as groundwater, or if it doesn't make it into the groundwater, it's going to runoff as stormwater. Runoff picks up, as you all know, for anyone here who's not familiar with stormwater runoff, when it runs in the street, when it runs on the land and it doesn't seep into the ground, it picks up all kinds of chemicals on its way to the lowest elevation. If you're on fill, you're on higher ground, and water is going to run down to those streets, particularly I'm thinking of Pompanesett, but there are other places I'm sure where this applies. You want as much rainwater, rainfall to become groundwater because on its way to the lower ground, it picks up nutrients, there's some kind, some amount of natural filtration that goes on, and wherever it doesn't pick up, go into the groundwater, it sits in the streets and it pools. And then if it's a lot of rain, it goes into some of the houses and floods the streets. Plus, it also pollutes the water bodies nearby. So now, that is what we would like to have done. And now with a little background on this, I'd like to play for you Evan Lair, our town manager's public service announcement on this proposed floodplain bylaw. Mary?
Hello, I'm Evan Lair, Mashpee's town planner. My office has received numerous phone calls over the past week relative to the zoning warrant articles submitted to the Select Board for inclusion on the October 2022 Town Meeting Warrant. These articles propose to repeal and replace the town's current floodplain provisions and replace them with a bylaw that is consistent with FEMA requirements and that rectifies conflicts with the Massachusetts State Building Code. I want to take a minute to address the confusion and to share with you what these articles do, what they don't, and why they're important. The planning board's floodplain overlay does not propose a substantial deviation from the existing condition. If your lot is buildable today, it will remain buildable following the passage of this article. If your property is located outside the floodplain today, you will not be in the floodplain upon passage of this article. The most significant new regulations that are proposed pertain to administrative management of permits in the floodplain for the building and conservation departments. Passage of these administrative regulations is a requirement to remain in the National Flood Insurance Program, which the town has participated in since 1978. If the town does not comply with NFIP requirements, the 537 policyholders in Mashpee will lose their flood insurance policies, which could affect existing mortgages. This article does propose one change for floodplain development, that is the prohibition of filling in the floodplain. Property owners are currently allowed to artificially raise the elevation of their lot, raising themselves out of the floodplain. The planning board and planning department believe this is a prudent restriction, given the benefits natural floodplanes provide by slowing stormwater runoff and storing floodwater in addition to other economic, social, and environmental benefits particularly pertaining to surface water quality and groundwater recharge. Basements are not permitted and have never been permitted in the floodplain as a home's lowest floor cannot sit below the base flood elevation. So what is the most substantial potential impact? Folks with property in the floodplain will not be allowed to fill in the floodplain, giving up the potential for a full basement. Homes must be constructed on pilings or on solid wall foundations with flood vents. This article does not propose a prohibition on new development or redevelopment in the floodplain. There are 2,455 properties in Mashpee that are touched by the floodplain. The vast majority of those only have a portion of their properties in the floodplain, and structures are able to be sighted outside of the special flood hazard areas. Of those 2,455 properties, there are approximately 1,307 that are totally or substantially located in the floodplain where FEMA and Building Code standards would be triggered. Of those 1,300, only 27 or 2% are vacant buildable lots, and none of them will lose their ability to build their home in the floodplain. If you have questions or want more detailed information or data pertaining to properties in Mashpee's floodplanes, please contact me in my office. I can be contacted by calling 508-539-1400, extension 8521. I am also accessible by and responsive to email. Thank you all very much.
Okay, we can go to the slides of the drawings. Oh, I'm sorry, the summary, I beg your pardon.
Here you go.
Okay, this is a summary of what Evan said, and I tried to make it as simple as possible. This bylaw would repeal and replace the current floodplain zoning bylaw with a bylaw that complies with FEMA requirements and resolves conflicts with the Mass State Building Code. Basically, it's all administrative rules and regs that are not in the original one, but that's the essence of this new bylaw. If you're in the floodplain, you can still build after passage of this article. If your property is outside of the floodplain, you won't be in the floodplain when this article passes. The new regulations, again, are mostly administrative management of permits in the floodplain for the building and conservation departments. 537 policyholders, we've been in this National Flood Insurance Program since 1978, Mashpee, that is. And if these policyholders do not comply with the minimum by redoing this bylaw about administrative rules, NFIP, that's the National Flood Insurance Program requirements, all the administrative rules and regs but the prohibition of fill go above and beyond, I'm sorry, that's not written right. The administrative rules are the minimal requirement. We want to go above the minimal requirement by putting that prohibition to fill in the floodplain. So if we stay, we want to stay in this floodplain or Florida flood insurance program, we have to follow the law. And with 537 people who have mortgages who want to stay in the flood, in the flood program, we need to do that. So now, right now, without this bylaw pass, property owners in the floodplain, as Evan said, can artificially raise the elevation of their lot and get out of the floodplain with fill. So we're saying you can't raise and replace your existing home or construct a new home on a vacant lot by using fill. And the reason for that is because when you have fill, you have disrupted the natural flow of water. It just creates an imbalance, it's just not natural, and it creates flooding. That's the main thing. So let's look at the pictures so you can sort of get a little better idea.
Do you want me to go to the pictures?
Yes, please. Okay, okay, this is one way that you can still build. So when developers say, you're taking my livelihood away, that's not true. A home built on pilings or columns in the floodplain, no basement, you can't have basements, allow floodwaters to run around the pilings, thereby creating less pressure and less likely to sustain flood damage. So that's allowed. This is a home, a lovely home, built on a solid wall foundation in the floodplain with flood vents and no basement. So the water runs into that foundation and out those flood vents, less pressure, less likely to sustain flood damage. That is still allowed. So now we have two ways to still build. Basement, home built on a solid wall foundation that do exist, they're not allowed anymore, but there are houses down there that do have basements, can be severely compromised when subjected to floodwaters due to the immense hydrostatic pressure exerted on the structure horizontally and vertically underneath the foundation. So this method is not ideal, and it's a potential for loss. Water has broken foundations, not allowed. Okay, this is what the bylaw is talking about. A home built out of the floodplain on fill above the natural surface of the lot, most of them have retaining walls, many of them have retaining walls around it, and they're close because the lots, particularly in Pompanesett, are small. So the retaining wall has no flood vents, no basement. And so you're up, and you see here, that's supposed to be a retaining wall, those lines. The rain, torrential rain flows downhill, and it really creates flooding in a big rainstorm. And that's what happens, and it derays, you know, I'm sure there's somebody here who's actually experienced it. The person that I know is not here and is not able to come and talk about it, but it's very upsetting because the people up on the higher ground, they're dry, and the people down in the streets are wet. Now, they, granted, if they come down to the street, they're going to get wet too, with their car or whatever, but these people live down there on the lower ground, and then when it floods their yard, it's a problem. It's a real problem for them. So those are the two reasons, you can continue to build, you're not harmed as a builder, but that one thing we are looking to take away because environmentally, it's not a good thing. It's rerouting the floodwaters big time.
Carol, I have a question.
Yes.
What about the person who has a lot?
Who has a lot?
Say there's a lot that's not being built yet, but there's an empty lot. The two houses next door to them have been built with fill. They're not going to be able to bring their level up because they won't be able to bring fill in. How does that work?
Well, first of all, we're saying we don't want, we want to prohibit building in those, you're talking about two houses that have fill.
Two houses that are already up high.
And the little house in the middle.
And a little house in the middle is down low, and they're on the water. What happens to their land?
That's a problem. That's a really good question, and we'll have to ask Evan for the answer, and he could probably give it to us next week, he'll be back.
They would be able to build just with the flood vents up on the stilts.
I mean, they can build, they can build.
They can still build.
Carol, they can build on.
You're not taking it either right.
Columns.
Okay.
They can build it up, they can, you know, not get flooded by building it up and build, yeah, the foundation. But depending on how high these fill houses are elevated, I think the, I think the law down in Pompanesett is, and probably a builder could, if I'm wrong, correct me, the fill, let's say the fill is five feet high.
Okay.
That's, now that's an unnatural surface on top, so they can build to the peak of the roof either 35 or 30 feet, peak of the roof. So that's going to be a high house.
Yeah.
We got a quorum here of the planning board.
I think we're posted.
Oh, you are?
I asked Evan to post.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Disregard.
Yes.
They could build on stilts.
Stilts, yeah.
So they're not stopped to build the houses, you know? And another thing, we're missing the point. When you build your house, you can't call it 35 feet. And that 35 foot is where the original elevation was, not where the fill is. And that's where we're getting the problem, because people are filling the houses and taking the elevation from that point to 35 feet. So if the elevation's at 11 feet, that means you have to go up, you have to be 14 feet for the first floor in a floodplain. So that means your foundation has to be four feet, four, three more feet out of that zone. When they put the fill in there, they may put five feet, and then they're going 35 feet, so now they're really 46, 47 feet high. So we're missing the point. We should say where you're getting the elevation from. Is that the original, where you bought your lot where the original elevation was before you started rebuilding? And we're not stopping anybody from building because you could put.
I just wanted to ask the question if it was low.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dennis. Mary?
I don't answer the question. If you might.
What's that?
They were checking to make sure they didn't have it posted for quorum.
I can read this? This? Well, I'm not done yet on my part. Yes. Mary? Oh, are you coming back?
Yeah, I will, but Dennis has to leave the room.
Oh, okay, I get, I get that.
It's not posted.
What about subjects?
Yeah, that's coming up next. That's coming up.
Did you have it for?
No, no.
Well, but you did. I'm there.
Well, right, but the assistant town manager and the town manager.
Excuse me, this is our meeting, please don't interrupt.
So I wanted you to go through the exceptions? The exceptions.
I'm not there yet, Mary.
Okay. That will answer the question about the subtext.
Good, but no, wait, just leave it like that. Okay. I need to go through the, I handed out, we handed out maps. Okay, this map here is important to know, and what I can tell you, my understanding here is all the red here, that's the map up there, but you can't really see it. This map, the red here is the V-zone, that means velocity. And that zone, and you'll have a definition page in the back of the proposed bylaw. The velocity zone, this is VE, velocity elevation, an area of special flood hazards with water surfaces determined and with velocity that is inundated by tidal floods, coastal high hazard area all along here. And then there's a lesser one in this yellow here, which is the AE, area of special flood hazards with water surface elevations determined. So this is, FEMA has mapped out the whole country. Sometimes they're not up to date, but this is apparently up to date. This is high hazard here. So we're trying to do our part to anything that we can possibly do to protect this land and protect people. Now, people have said, they said in Saturday at the Pompanesett Beach Association, that they've been here 40 years and there's never been a problem. But then somebody said, well, you know, my mother and father live in New Jersey near the beach, and Sandy wiped them out. So it's going to happen because base flood elevation, which we spoke about, is the estimated height that FEMA has covered at which floodplain waters could rise in a particular area during a base flood. And it's really a 100-year flood, and it doesn't mean it only happens every 100 years. It has a 1% chance of happening every single year. So with high water tables and changing climate, we have to really be concerned about this. So take a look at that, and look at the definition of these zones at the back of your proposed bylaw. Now, I'll just go through the one prohibition, and it is, let's see, it is, these pages are not paginated, so I'll just tell you it's page 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, page 6, prohibitions, one, section 174-dash. Page 6, prohibitions, one, section 174-67.
What is it you're referencing?
I'm referencing the proposed bylaw.
It'd be on our page 11.
I know, I keep that here.
Prohibitions.
Just, you know, go sequentially, 174-67, prohibitions. Do you see it?
Got it, yeah. No person shall fill, place, or dump.
No person shall fill, place, or dump in a floodplain any soil, loam, peat, sand, gravel, rock, or other material. Refuse trash, rubbish, debris, or dredge material with the exception of landscaping material as allowed in the section below here. And the second part, which is a little bit complicated, no letters of map revision based on fill or letters of map amendment based on fill will be permitted. It is permitted now and this is a way currently without that bylaw that people can build, they build on fill out of the floodplain and then if they want, they can get a certificate, but it's complicated, signed and sealed by a professional landsurver to demonstrate that the structure is sufficiently above the floodplain per local regulations. And then FEMA has to approve the letter. It takes sometimes six months to do it and when you get the letter of approval, you submit it to your carrier, to the insurance carrier. And you might get a reduced amount because now you've taken your house out of the floodplain. And that's what I guess the developers want.
Excuse me, Karen, could you talk into the mic?
I'm sorry. So we're talking about the environment here and it's just not working. It's so harmful. The more fill houses we have, the more flooding we're going to have. So as I said, if you look at the next pages, you'll see, let me give you the exceptions. Okay, so you can, you can't use fill to build a house, but the exceptions are you can use some landscape material. You can read how much you can use. You can use rock for the purpose of reconstructing a revetment, which is a barricade of earth, like sandbags. There's, you know, fill there, but you can do that to help against, to help against erosion. And you can also build, use rock for a groin. And I've never seen one, but it's described as a perpendicular structure to the shore to restrict or prevent beach erosion, a long, narrow structure built out in the water to trap sand. I don't know if you've ever seen it or you know what it is, but I don't. And use of dredge material for beach renourishment, that is allowed as well. So it's, it's an important bylaw. It does not cure all our problems, but people who.
And Karen, that highlighted section on the, that's the, that's the new piece that Evan put in.
Yeah, I'm going to cover that. So you people who do live in the floodplain, the house you live in might be your biggest investment and we want to protect it from getting flooded. Perhaps your house is a legacy house that you're going to leave to your children or your grandchildren. So this helps to protect you, your house, your septic tanks, and the streets from being flooded out. It's very, very simple. When you alter the natural grade of the land by adding fill, you can just direct stormwater right into your yard, your street, which stormwater goes into the water bodies and continues the pollution. The proposed addition, oh. I am sorry, Wayne. Do you want to come over here?
I do have Town Planner's Memo here in front of me. So this, this is a memo that was, suggested amendment that was prepared in response to some community feedback relative to the provision of the floodplain articles that propose to prohibit the use of fill in the floodplain as a construction method. This amendment seeks to provide clarity for a property owner in the floodplain whose septic has failed and which has been deemed an imminent health hazard by the Board of Health and whose property sits on a high water table with an inadequate distance to groundwater. In a case like this, fill will be required to maintain a functional system and if the proposed restriction is approved, as proposed at town meeting, would require variance to elevate the system from the zoning board of appeals. A property owner whose system has been deemed an imminent health hazard has two weeks to upgrade the system. And whether they opt for an IA system that requires less distance to groundwater or a conventional system, some fill may be required in areas with a water table and failed systems deemed an imminent health hazard. Do not have the time to obtain the relief from the ZBA. As a result, the paragraph of potential insertion into proposed subsection 174-67.1 that would solve this challenge for this limited scenario is as follows. In the event of a septic failure deemed by the Mashpee Board of Health to be an imminent health hazard necessitating repair and replacement consistent with the requirements of 310 CMR-15 landscape material necessary to achieve at least the minimum required separation distance to groundwater shall not be considered fill as regulated by subsection 174-67 of this bylaw. Only the minimum amount of landscaping material necessary to upgrade the system and achieve compliance with 310 CMR-15 shall be exempt. All other proposed septic systems shall require a variance from the zoning board of appeals consistent with the subsection 174-61.3 of this bylaw if there is inadequate distance to groundwater. A failed system that is not deemed an imminent health hazard has two years to upgrade the system, which is more than enough time to seek and be granted relief in consideration if conditions necessity. So I think, you know, Evan's put together quite a comprehensive PSA and, you know, he explains things very thoroughly. This was done as a result of a lot of community feedback and, you know, I think he hits on most all the points and satisfies a lot of the concerns.
David, if I may, would you, could I just put up this last thing? We skipped this. The floodplain overlay frequently asked questions. I think this pretty much covers the big questions. This is something that Evan prepared, questions and answers. Will the proposed amendment to the floodplain make my lot unbuildable? If you own a vacant buildable lot in a special hazard, flood hazard today, or own a lot with a pre-existing dwelling, it will not make your lot unbuildable. I'll just ask the question. You read the answer. How does prohibiting the use of fill in the floodplain restrict my ability to build or renovate my house? So those are the two ways you can do it.
Are these accessible online? We'll get them online.
That would be great to put them online.
They're online.
How do they find them?
They are included in the agenda packet materials online for the public, general public to access.
We have a few copies up here. We can make a few extras if there's anybody from the public that would like one, Mr. Chair, and also we'll make sure that it's in an easier to find site tomorrow.
Okay.
David, do you want me to stop? It's just a one-page thing.
Does anybody want one?
Does anybody want any of the floodplain overlay facts that Town Planner has put together? We're offering more information that's been provided by the Town Planner.
It doesn't answer the septic, you need walls around the septic system to continue a septic.
Here's a question on the septic, if you just go up, Mary.
Yep. I need to replace my septic system. Right? Is that the one you?
Yeah.
Yeah. I need to replace my septic system. I was told by the Board of Health that because of the high water table, I need to elevate my upgraded system by using fill so there would be adequate distance to groundwater. Will this proposal make this impossible? No.
How are you going to?
So I think that.
Contain that septic system if you cannot have walls?
Just don't at the mic, Mr. Chair.
Excuse me, if anybody, this isn't really a public hearing, so it's somewhat awkward.
It just doesn't answer the question.
But if you do have a question, I'd have to ask you to come to the mic and specifically ask so that everyone can hear you and it can be televised.
And I think that there's a new, there's a new paragraph that Evan puts in there to resolve that issue.
Correct.
That's what, that's what the, that there's not a prohibition about repairing, replacing your septic system that has failed.
I'll give everyone a chance to ask one question and then for sake of time, and if you'd step to the mic, please announce your name and your address at this time. Yes.
Sure. I get the fill and I cert, oh, I'm sorry, Mary Noosleven, so I live in, down there in Pompanesett. And I have, I completely understand about the fill. My question is, and visualizing this effect, increasing groundwater or runoff onto the streets or wherever, neighbors understandably. I live on Kim Path and if you ever took a drive down Kim Path, lots of plateaus with D-Nite systems, septic systems, high water tables, hence no other choice but to put in a raised system. So, you know, here's the ground, here's a raised system. To contain.
We need the mic.
You understand at the mic, ma'am.
Oh, to contain this raised system, sorry. You need walls around it, you know? So that's my question. If you can't have walls, how do you keep that in existence without deteriorating over time and running off? Deteriorating, you know, collapsing.
If I understand your question correctly, you're asking specifically what was answered in the new edition in the subsection 174-67.1, which says if your system comes back as a fail, then you're allowed to add fill minimally to achieve the.
But it doesn't mention walls unless I missed that. Does it talk about retaining walls?
Not specifically.
Right. So that's my question. You need them. Every system.
Well, it does say only the minimum amount of landscaping material necessary to upgrade the system and achieve compliance shall be exempt. All other proposed septic systems shall require variance from zoning. So, I mean, I guess you could interpret that to be landscaping materials as, you know, retaining walls and rock to retain the amount of material that's brought in. I would say that that interpretation, I think, would suffice. I would have to ask.
I would just like clarification on that. Just be, I mean, I'm done. I've got mine.
Town manager.
I've got my raised system and my, anyway.
Why don't we follow up with you after the planner gets back and then we'll get the specificity for the answers.
Right. Just so it's clarified that you can have cement walls or whatever. That's my question.
Minimum compliance to achieve.
Right. So, I mean, I would interpret that landscaping materials, retain, a lot of retaining. Yes, sir.
Thank you for accommodating us because I know this is a sensitive, delicate topic and just out of the normal, so I thank you for your consideration on that first and foremost. You know, my thing is there's so many other conflicting factors that happen here. So when I look at those homes on stilts, I look at like a cruddy section of North Carolina or something like that. I'm not looking at Cape Cod. I'm not looking at the beautiful quintessential beauty that we have come to be known for. And I see that this affecting our values and our tax base and then when we don't make that revenue over time, that means that the rest of us have to pay for it because we don't have the revenue coming in. And because, you know, the police and the fire and everyone else, they need their money. You know, they're not going to lower their rates because we can't make as much money because of the decisions that we made today in the future. So I think that this is, you know, has such a profound impact and I want to understand it better from a longevity perspective and because I think a lot of this stuff to meet the FEMA compliances would go away if we just had a sewer system. So I would like to know what things we could not have to do now because we could do a better system. So I want to please both sides of this and I want to do it with effective means in a way that doesn't totally screw a lot of people in this town. And, you know, so we need more time to understand this better. We need to be fair to everyone. So that's what I'm asking for is time with this especially. That's my biggest ask with this. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. You know, this is, we are trying to keep this restricted to the item before us at this time, which is specific to Article 10, the floodplain issues, you know. So that's kind of the focus of this discussion at this time. Appreciate your comments and thank you.
Meredith Kilpatrick, Tracy Lane. It's obvious that the amount of information that we all require to make effective decisions, we don't have enough time with how it's been presented. My question tonight, I have two. The first is why does Mashpee have to supersede the state regulations for the Mashpee Floodplain 2020 bylaw? Two, why are we rushing to come to a decision when we're not prepared? We're using handwritten drawings, not engineered plans. So I ask that the board withdraw this from the town warrant until perhaps the spring or even the fall until we can all be better educated.
Concerns are duly noted.
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. Paul Thurston, 19th Hall of Road, Pompanesett. I'm the former property manager for the Pompanesett PPA Association. Quite familiar with all the drainage, all the building, all the construction throughout that area. I also have construction super license. I also have real estate licensure as well. I had done probably 90% of the drainage in Pompanesett. The drainage is based on lots of various reasons. Some people may think they know, but ultimately water hits a hard surface like asphalt and it can't permeate into the asphalt. It has to go somewhere. It's going to go up, it's going to go down. We don't have a drainage system in Pompanesett. When you see drains or manholes in Pompanesett, what you actually see is a hefty trash barrel with a storm drain cover on it and a bunch of gravel. That's it. There's no pipe, doesn't take it anywhere, doesn't go anywhere. It goes right where you see it. So that's how we've been mitigating stormwater management, rain runoff, any roof runoff for years in that area. So I'm quite familiar, again, we know the elevation of the water table is very high, seasonally high, higher than others. We all base it off. I'd just like to make some real quick comments for you. The fill in the floodzone is permitted by FEMA. It's been permitted for years and the articles that they're trying to reference that they're not getting to is like an LOMF. People can actually add fill in certain areas. Maybe it's only a foot and it raises their property out of the floodzone. It doesn't detrimentally hurt their neighbors. What it does is financially helps their pocketbook because they don't have to pay exuberant monies for flood insurance. In the last two years, I've had two clients who were either were selling or wanted to rent their houses and the conversations came up to the flood insurance program. And I asked them, I said, you guys, you know, do you have a mortgage? Because if you have a mortgage, you have to have flood insurance. Some of them don't have mortgages, they don't have to pay, they can self-insure. And, you know, two of them said, yeah, I have, mine's $7,000 a year. Imagine $7,000 flood insurance for $250,000 worth of coverage is all the federal government pays. The other gentleman was $9,000. What happened years ago when these regulations had come into effect? The insurance companies go with the mortgage companies and they actually inflated these costs to these peoples for these insurance. And some are stuck because they can't refinance their mortgages, they can't do any things. I just wanted to give you a quick overview on that because it's detrimental to a lot of people and they can't really get out of it. Regarding construction, everything that the people had stated from you need storm vents, that is the building code now. That's been the building code for a decade. We have to be at base flood elevation. We have to be out of it. So the comments about raising, yeah, I'm not here to argue how we raise. Raised by a concrete wall, you can do pilings, you can do piers. We're going to raise the house. The house itself has to be out of it. So there's a couple of things. People talk in structures. Maybe you just want your lot up or a little landscaping. It's not all those items, but all those. But all those statements they made about the flood vents, that is pre-existing. The flood, the height in Pompanasset, which is a special overlay district, is not the 35 feet that, I'm sorry, Dennis was mentioning. It's actually 30 feet, for those of us who want to know, 30 feet from average mean grade. And to the point, how do you get an average mean grade? The engineers go out, this is before you get your building permit, and they survey all four corners of your house. Your house might go down like this. So, corner one might be 10, quarter one might be eight, quarter one might be six. They take the average of those four corners, that starts your average mean grade. From there, you can go 30 feet. That's it. We don't fill, and then we start counting. It doesn't work that way. Some of the evidences that you will see is like the house, for instance, that was built on the water on Wilson's Grove. There's a lot of misinformation being applied here. These, the fill is not a bad thing. What happens if the water is pouring into a guy's home right now? Because he's low. It comes down off the street and the high, and it just pours in constantly into his yard. He wants to just bring his yard up to grade so he's not taking the entire street down here because he's the low guy. You can't bring in fill. We're actually taking his land and using it as a catch basin or a drainage swale at this time, which is really unfair to him as well.
Was there a question?
I'm sorry?
Was there a question?
No, no, I'm just asking that when, we're talking high. I'm talking what happens when it's low.
I agreed to accept questions, and I asked, everyone asked one question, and you've been going on for quite a while now.
Okay, well, let me just finish that...
I haven't seen a que... heard a question.
Okay, the question is, I would like the board, because Drew from Conservation on Thursday night, went through his articles because there was so much misinformation and disinformation and not well-thought-out processes regarding fill and his articles. He asked to withdraw his article, which this board voted. I would like to ask that this board remove this article because they should put both the conservation articles coming forward in the spring and this article coming, should come with it in the spring at the same time. Thank you.
So, we heard enough, and I think we've heard enough from the general public. I think, you know, if folks read over the article as presented, it does address some of the concerns just now raised. I think to Mr. Thurston's point, you know, the exception, subsection 174-67.1, does allow for landscape material up to two feet in depth at the foundation and tapered to meet the grade within 10 feet of foundations. Of the foundation shall not be calculated towards grade plain and shall be considered fill as regulated. The use of rock purposes of reconstruction, revetment, and grunts, you know, some of these things are addressed in there. And, you know, I think Evan's fact sheet and then the supplemental amendment, I think, addresses, like I said, most all the concerns that folks had with regards to this section. The only thing that I will say is that, you know, protecting wetlands, wetlands are unique ecosystems. The ecosystems are critical to the larger environment. Wetlands also filter a tremendous amount of nutrients and runoff that are captured. Water is the transmission of most contaminants. And so, the wetlands are a natural way to filter out those contaminants before it gets to water systems and water sheds. So, in doing this protection, you know, as human beings, we always think that we can out-engineer what Creator has designed. And that's not appropriate. You know, the way that the topography is naturally, the landscape and topography in its natural condition, water finds the path the least resistant, and so it finds its easiest way and easiest route to the watershed and contributes to that in a healthy way. You know, going in and manipulating topography and everything else, it's not consistent with the healthy ecology of the larger area or the watershed or the water system. So, you know, I know everyone wants to, and we've heard plenty from, you know, realtors and things that are concerned with protecting, you know, rights and interest of individuals. You know, I don't think anything in here prevents anybody from doing. It does change common practice moving forward to give minimal allowances for build-out. It doesn't take anyways anyone's right to build away. You know, you put them up on stilts. It's, we have, we're experiencing a climate crisis and anticipation of greater storm effects and things, everyone's talking about. This is common knowledge. So, I think, you know, this, what this article aims to do is bring us into compliance. It does put a little bit extra to protect sensitive ecosystems in wetland areas, and, you know, I would ask the board to vote to recommend the added exemption, subsection 174-67.1, based on the town planner's memo and public sentiment at this time, to the original base article being considered.
Can I start off with a few questions, I have statements, and then kind of go into this?
On the larger article or on the exception, on the added exception?
You are, are you singling out the whole article or just the exception?
Right now, I wanted to amend the original article to add the exception based on the town planner's memo, and then we can talk about the overall arching article at that time.
Okay. I'll motion to amend the, and add the amendment, right? It's an amendment.
Subsection 174-67.1.
So moved.
Hearing of first and second, roll call. Tom?
Yes, I'll go then.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
Carol?
And I'm a yes. So, we've added the exception, and so now the, you know, I guess the discussion is around the floodplain article overall being added to the warrant. Your question?
Yeah, could I have a few, I'd like to make a few statements, if you don't mind. So, I mean, there's a lot here. I mean, I think everybody knows this, this is not an easy decision, no matter how this goes today, tonight. But just be aware that, again, it will take a two-thirds vote to pass by town meeting. So, that being said, I still have some concerns, one of them being, you know, to Carol's point earlier, you asked a question about two houses that, you know, there's a house in between that's sandwiched between that already has fill.
Do they have to do stilts?
And, you know, and then, so my question is, they go up on stilts or whatever, they can't use fill. Depending upon the elevation, how do you get to the house? How do you get to the front door? I, if you, I know it sounds like...
Same way that people do in film, with on stilts.
Did it come a ladder? I know, see, I know, it sounds like, it's like a cartoon question, but I do have that question, and I'm not saying, I'm obviously not going to get the answer now, but I have a concern when I'm looking at a house up on stilts, I mean, do they throw down a ladder and they climb to their, to their first, to the entrance?
There's usually a stairway that goes from...
Stairs are elevated walkways.
There's usually stairs.
But I know, but typically...
The stairway that goes from the...
I'm trying to be, again, to answer your question, because typically you would have grade and fill. So, I'm just, I'm exaggerating my point. I just want to make it very clear. It's not, you can't use fill. So, that's what this article is saying. I'm just, I know this comment, that common sense has to come into play, but I'm reading to the letter of the law here.
If you're actually that low enough floodplain where, you know, you're talking about...
I, I get it.
Swings and bridges.
But to her point, he was talking about a house on both sides, they, you know, they may have raised because they've used fill, and there may be only certain places like that. Again, I don't live in the water, so, again, I don't live in that, you know, neighborhood, so I, but I can imagine there may be a few situations like that that are not developed and still would like to develop, and they own the property. That may be a problem. And again, I just, I'm just stating the facts, that's all.
My interpretation is, though, that your roadway is going to be on a higher plane, typically. I mean, the roadway doesn't go through the lowest point of the plane. So, I mean, typically, typically. But, I mean, you know, if you're within the floodplain, there's ways of engineering access, you know, with raised walkways and things of that nature, to get around that.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, because I would read all the raised walkways and the whole thing, I, like, that's what I'm saying. The entrance to the, to the, to their entrance to your house, if it's built up on stilts, I don't see that. And again, that could be clarification if it's approved. We, between now and then, it would be a good thing for Evan to do another video to kind of clarify a few of our questions. Karen mentioned also, if this is approved, she mentioned flood insurance discounts? I don't know if, is that...
Could I speak to that?
If, Mr. Chair.
Karen, yes, if you have an answer for that.
My, my understanding is if you go above the minimum standards, which is above the new regs and whatnot, and you put a prohibition for building on, on fill, you may get a discount because, you know, FEMA wants, wants you to do everything and anything you can to prevent flooding. So, that's the answer.
May. May, yes. Just have you just another question, if we can get, again, no matter how this goes today, it'd just be another question. I'd love for Evan to, you know, have that answer. And again, I already asked, my third question was about the, you know, Carol's part of the in-between house, fill and access to the entrance, and then the insurance, flood insurance discounts. Listen.
Mr. Chair, I think maybe we should put this off until May. I think a lot of people want more clarification, and if we're going to do it, let's do it right. Let's so that people understand what they can and cannot use for fill and around your septic. If you can put a wall, I lived in a house where I did have groundwater, and I had to lift up my septic. It was in Howardport. And your septic is kind of up in the air, and a lot of people don't want their septic sticking up over their backyard and have to put a fence or something around it. So, I think we need a lot of questions answered, and it's not here. So, I make a motion that we delay this until May, when everyone can be educated on it and we do it right.
Let me just add to that. You have a motion on the floor, and I recognize that. I think this is a little premature. I know that we all need, people need flood insurance, it's important to them, but in the same token, it doesn't seem to be any clarity here as to what these elevated houses are. And John, you raised a good point. Everybody was talking about the elevated houses, forgetting about the guy that might be in the middle with an existing house at, at average grade, at ground level, existing ground level. So, it creates a lot of additional issues, you know, just, just the fact of the matter that everybody is not understanding fully of what's happening here. And I don't think the presentation overall has been very good by FEMA or anybody. I think it's very uneasy...
And I would love, I would love to save on my flood insurance.
Tom has the floor?
But, but I, I think that it lacks the clarity that the individuals, these are nice homes, these are nice areas, and I think it needs better understanding, there needs to be more to be talked about, and needs more input from the residents of the town of Mashpee. And those are the people that we represent, are the residents. And I think that's what's most important here, is the flood insurance is very important, but it's also very important we take care of the residents and come to a system or a manner in which they can protect their homes, everybody, and at a reasonable cost. And I, I will second your motion, Carol.
May I, may I say something on that? There is a public hearing, I just mislaid the date, at the planning board where anybody and everybody can come and say what they want to say. Mary, do you have the date on that? It's a 7/15, it's a Thursday, it's a...
Yeah, I think it's the 29th. We won't hold the public hearing if you don't put it on the warrant. I mean, that's only for things that are on the warrant. And I think that this town is in a water crisis, and everything that's coming before you is being delayed. This needs to get going. People will understand it well enough by October 17th for us to take an educated vote. I don't recommend that you take this, searing won't...
I ask that everyone...
Sewering has nothing to do with this.
Not heckle from the audience?
The floodplain is an important resource that we have to protect. And that scenario that you're talking about, Carol, of two houses that are high in one, that's exactly what we're trying to prevent. Because the more you fill into this area, the more that storm surge is going to come in, the faster it's going to come, and the more damage it's going to do.
I understand that, Mary.
Right. So, so that's, this is important for the planning board to have brought this to you. This is important for the water in town. We're protecting properties by doing this. And if nothing gets on this warrant about clean water, I don't know where this town is going.
So, at this time, I haven't entertained the motion that was made. So, you know, I do have to agree that, you know, this is something that I think there's a lot of information that's been put in here. You know, we can always come up with more questions, but, you know, it's, at the end of the day, it's to bring us and bring consistency to the both the FEMA flood laws, the state regulations, local and town, the town regulations as well. You know, there's always going to be hesitation. We heard from a few people that have concerns. Some of those concerns, I believe, are addressed in this, if you read over it thoroughly. And, you know, I wish that the town planner was here to answer some of the questions. He's very articulate, he knows this inside and out, as someone who's put in a lot of time and effort into crafting it. You know, I don't see the hesitation in holding it up and putting it in town meeting and letting the people decide. You know, like I said, and it may even bring financial benefits to people if there's discounts as a result of taking this action. So, you know, I would prefer that we vote and recommend moving this forward to town meeting so that the town, the body can, general membership, citizens of the town can make their own decision collectively, everyone. That, that's my recommendation, and I would accept a motion to move that forward.
David, may I say something here?
I think we heard enough on this. I'd like to move forward, you know, for sake of time and get through this. So, no one's willing to make a motion to move it forward?
You have a motion.
I guess I have Carol's motion to, what was it, to table?
Delay. To delay until May.
To delay till May.
And Tom seconded.
So, entertain that motion. Hearing of first and second. Roll call vote, Carol?
To delay, yes.
Taking a roll call.
I am. John?
Ah, man. Wish I had more information.
I know. We will in May.
Your vote?
Well, so, well, and so there's a first and second, but... Well, so, well, and so there's a first and second, but we, you know, we, we didn't have a discussion, actually. So, there was a first and a second, but if you don't mind, Mr. Chair. This Article 10, there's more to this than just fill, correct? So, this, I mean, part of this...
I'm going to wait for the chair to recognize.
So, part of this is prohibiting fills.
Substantial amount, more than the fill is just a small measure of it. That's, that's the one piece that goes above and beyond the requirements.
Correct.
It's the only item that goes beyond the requirements to comply. So, it's a minimal, minimal.
Mr. Chair, what if we took that up and we could pass?
If, that's what I'm going to. So, my thought is, you know, again, first of all, I know, Tommy, you mentioned it, but I, I think Evan did an amazing job with his video. I like, I couldn't be prouder. He was clear, precise. We're lucky to have him as our town planner. That being said, I think he did a lot of work here. I've learned a lot about venting of basements and, like, I had no idea that this stuff existed. You know, listening to everybody, my thought would be, so it's not a total disappointment, you know, is adopting Article 10, but removing the, the fill from the article. I, I know it's, it's not a total success, but it's something, rather than just kicking it down the road till May again, I, I think it brings his standards back to flood and, you know, hopefully it's seen as a slight win. And if he wants to bring it back in May, as far as go after, you know, the, the fill as a one-off, I don't know to be exact. I have to be careful about breaking off the, the sections of the fill, because it's, it's quite lengthy article. I'd be curious to see what your thoughts are. I mean...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just for the sole purpose of clarity, I just want to make sure as to what Select and Cotton is referring specifically to relative to what would be deleted. Is it 174-67, or are you talking about something in addition to that? Because we got to be very, very clear on what is being changed, because if you execute tonight what you're required to do, then we want to make sure we have it accurate.
If, I mean, the way I see it right now is, it's the prohibitions, right? 174-67. That's the part that mentions no use of fill. And again, if everyone can double check.
Well, you get 164th, 71st are exceptions to the fill.
And then you have exceptions.
The way, you know what I mean?
I don't know if it will or will, will not. You know, we're predicting, you know, what do we have? Three, a couple hundred people, 300, 400 people at town meeting?
No, it won't, it won't get to the one unless we...
I mean, you know, for me, it feels like, you know, we're willing to protect people's properties, but the environment, we're not willing to go, you know, just a minimal, it is, it's a minimal amount. I mean, you're allowing for two feet of fill, you're not, you're just not allowing for, you know, drastic changes in the grade. I mean, it's not an unreasonable ask, you know, and, and we can engineer everything else, but we can't figure out, you know, some of the questions raised tonight. You know, it, it's disappointing that we're prioritizing, you know, the built environment over the natural environment. That's the way I see it. And we, as the select board, are being gatekeepers from putting it forth as, you know, people that are much more articulate on the subject than I am. They've drafted it in a way and contributed to trying to address public comments and concerns as they've been, as they've been received. And, you know, this is the way they see it moving forward, and we're not taking that recommendation and moving it forward to the general membership. That's just the way I see it, you know.
Mr. Chair, the only reason why I opposed it to it is there's too many questions.
But, like I said, if, if Evan was here, I'm sure that he could speak to them. And if Evan is at town meeting and is able to speak to these at town meeting, I feel as though they are all, most, all of them are addressed in this, in this draft. If you read over it closely, there's different points where they touch on everything that's been raised. Town manager?
If, if you do bring it forward, remember it can be amended at town meeting.
There's another option. You know, because trying, trying to withdraw something at this point, you know, I'd have to read through every single component and subsection to make sure that, you know, that's, that's, we're framing it in a way that the town manager's office can move it forward and, and go to print. And I, I don't...
Yeah, I mean, I'm, listen, I made the motion, but only because we had, well, I guess we should, to reconsider that we should, we already had a, we got a motion in the first and second. We already have the, I brought it back as far as the discussion, so we could consider a second option. Because right now, we have a first and a second to move forward with withdraw. So...
Bring it back in the spring.
So, and again, that's, again, I, I thought the rest of this article warranted, there's a lot of effort here to bring, from my understanding, like, to bring our, our flood zone to, to state, you know, it, it just brought it up to date. So, if we, the possibility of either we, they take the, maybe a small win with potentially, a potential small win, or it gets pushed off to May. That's, I mean, because right now, we have a first and a second to move forward to kick it to May.
So, I mean, you brought, you brought back discussion, so, I mean, you know...
That's why I try to stop it from, so, it...
Your vote is...
So, my, so, all right, so we, first and second, so...
You got a motion in the second, and you're in discussion phase.
All right, so, if you don't, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, we can call the vote for withdrawal. If you can call the vote, please.
The vote votes with you.
Okay. I say no. No.
Tom?
What are we voting on now?
The vote to withdraw and, and hold off till May.
Delay.
To delay.
Vote to delay for...
No, no, no heckling, please. Tom, it's your, your vote to, as Carol and you seconded, to delay the article until May.
Yes.
That's the question. My, my vote is no. It's...
So, it fails.
Fails. Correct.
So, I...
I mean, it, it passes. It passes to, to, to delay.
No.
No, nothing, nothing happens. So, we, no, we can decide, we can, we're back to square one. Two to two, we have no, it has to be three to one for anything to happen. So, right now, we, we can consider other, any options.
Any option.
That's why I, so we're back to square one again.
So, how, how do we want to proceed on this?
Now, we, so, and again, just, two to two, nothing happens. So, my thought is to bring the flood zone regs up to date with all the effort that Evan did. I believe, the only, my only question is his proposed additional language. If that contingent upon, as long as that does not include questionable language with fill, I believe the only section that would be, is 174-67, which is the prohibition of fill. And my motion would be to approve Article 10 as written in the warrant, with the exception of 174-67 with the prohibitions.
So, it's taken the fill out?
It's just taken the fill out and, but it, it would allow the rest of his article to pass and go to town meeting.
Okay. I understand that one, if I could, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I understand that 174-67 is being stricken in the latest proposal. My only question is whether or not there's any other provision or section or language, because...
It would have to also go with exceptions, which is 174-67-1 would be removed, and the proposed additional language would be removed.
Because the additional language talks about fill for the sewage.
It would be 67 and 67-1, in their entirety.
Entirety.
Kathy, do you have that?
Yes.
Karen, do you have that?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Approve Article 10 with exception of 174-67.
So, as amended.
One... Point one.
And point one.
And the proposed additional language.
That is 67.1.
Yep. But we had approved it before to add it.
Right. So, it would be, it's basically all prohibitions for anything to do with fill.
Okay.
Prohibition and the exceptions coming up that you're...
Correct.
To those provisions.
Yeah.
I second that.
Hearing of first and second, roll call vote. Tom?
No.
John?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
David, yes. So, that's a three to one, that passes to move the article forward with the removal of one, subsections 174, 67, and 674.1.
And we also would need to vote on recommendation, right?
Recommendation to approve Article 10.
As stated.
As, as stated with alterations.
So, Tom, again, this is just to, now, this is to recommend, but we are removing the fill from the article.
From the article.
67 and 67.1 of 174.
Oh, so we've got to go back in 67.
It's to recommend.
It's to recommend and approve at the, for the board.
You're recommending to town meeting?
Town meeting.
I'm going to vote no.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
I'm a yes. So, the vote of the board is three to one to recommend Article 10 with amendments.
Okay.
So, I jumped out of sequence on this cheat sheet. We still have to vote to recommend or not recommend Article 7, page 3.
Mr. Chairman, I have a PowerPoint presentation.
Relevant, relative to Article 3.
Low impact development?
Stormwater.
Do you guys have this in your packet?
Which one is it?
Yes.
Yes, the low impact?
Yep, we got it.
We got it.
So, Mr. Chairman, can I make my statement?
Yes, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. Mary Wagon, Chair of the Planning Board, pitch hitting again. We're pitch hitting tonight for Evan Layer, our town planner, who was not able to be here tonight. These comments pertinent to the proposed warrant articles numbers seven, eight, and nine in your meeting packet tonight. With the passage of Articles 7, 8, and 9 by town meeting, any residential or non-residential development or redevelopment requiring a special permit or any development with a building of over 1,000 square feet that needs a building permit would have to have an onsite stormwater system that includes low-impact development. So, right now, the bylaw encourages it. This would, these changes would require it. So, what is low-impact development? Low-impact development are practices that mimic or preserve natural drainages on the site to manage your stormwater. So, instead of things going into drainage underneath the ground, you use things like rain gardens and vegetated swales. This allows the, the water running off onto the, from the property into vegetated areas that remove pollutants such as phosphorus and nitrogen, which are the pollutants of concern. It also takes care of, it removes oil, bacteria, sediments, metals, hydrocrumbs, other, and other pollutants. I'll go to the next slide. And these, these are the things that you would see more and more in town if we pass this. To the left, it's a vegetated swale, and to the right, it's a rain garden. Let's see. I, I just wanted to be clear that there's, that, you know, low-impact development is this, is vegetated areas. It's the, it's the maintenance of part of the site's natural capacity to deal with stormwater. Stormwater is going to become, you know, the topic, the prime topic about clean waters as we start to sewer the town. And if we go for our watershed permit, I'm told by our town engineer that they're going to be looking for things like this in town. So, we'll be ahead of the game. These articles are part of the planning board's Clean Water Initiative, another important tool to clean up our waters here in town. And, you know, I hope that you put these three articles on the warrant. Tom, you're looking at me so intensely.
Well, as you're talking about these things, I think about, do, do we truly monitor the irrigation of lawns and the fertilizers that are used there that create the nitrogen and the phosphorus programs? Because this is like one step beyond that. I don't even know what enforcement is, takes place at that level.
So, I think, I think your Director of DNR and your, your conservation agent is going to return about stuff like that.
Well, that's, that's where I'm at. I mean, we see, I feel like we're, we're jumping, creating these swales and ways to disperse the water. But, you know, if we're looking for a, at a lawn or, like I say, fertilization, that's where your phosphorus and your, and your nitrogen comes from.
If you want me to work on a fertilizer bylaw, I will. Right now, we're good on this.
You want something to do?
Um, you know, we had it, we had a nice meeting and Catherine Laurent, no, really, Catherine Laurent was there and she, she suggested some language to have the best management practices and the maintenance plans be part of that. As you know, when you sat on the planning board, there were developments that came in with these things.
They did.
Right? The, the rain from the roofs get channeled to, to vegetated swales and rain gardens. Back in the day, we had a town planner and engineer that really took that word encourage and, and used it as the word require. I think now, with the passing of the baton, we need to change that word from encourage to required. There's been a couple of proposals that have come before us that haven't had this in it. And I, I just think that, again, clean water, we're in a clean water crisis. We, we all need to pitch in. We can't just put pipes in the ground. We all need to, to contribute. And that does mean the business community as well as residents.
And I agree with you, Mary. I think that it's some of those ideals that we had in place years ago, 10, 12, 15 years ago, they've seemed to disappear, you know?
Right. Mr. Chair, on Article 7, I make a motion to approve and recommend.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, although, yes, roll call vote. Tom, John?
Yes.
Yes.
Carol? And I'm a yes. Motion is unanimous. Accept a motion to accept Article 8?
Motion to approve and recommend.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, roll call vote. Carol?
Yes.
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 I'm a yes as well. Motion to approve Article 9 as presented.
A motion to approve and recommend Article 9.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, roll call vote. Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
And I'm a yes on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Mary.
Moving on to Article 14, the Santuit Boat Ban on page 6. Uh, moving on to Article 14, um, the Santua Boat Ben on page 16 on to 17.
Some serious pages.
There was just um, Berber, which I think we wanted in that.
Yes, it was defining the, the motorboat.
The motorboat, okay.
This, it was a memo.
Yes.
Town, uh, as well.
Oh, that motorboat language again.
Yes.
Correct.
I make a motion to approve and recommend motorized boat, that's what it was, instead of motorboat.
Second.
This, this article, it includes the 1719 with the new definition. Okay, I just wanted to be sure. Hearing a first and second, motion to accept and approve and recommend, roll call vote. Tom?
Yes.
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 Carol? I'm a yes on that as well. Brings us to Article 16?
Fifteen.
Sixteen you already removed, Dave.
Oh, gotcha. Article 16.
Fifteen, one five, yes.
Moring regulations?
About to remove per town council.
Second.
Hearing a first and second, vote to remove Article 17 moring regulations. I mean, fifteen.
Fifteen, one five, yes.
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Article 17, vote to remove per town council regulations.
A motion to remove.
Second.
And this was got to Article 17, Chapter 170 violations. Hearing a first and second, roll call vote. Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. That motion passes.
I make a motion to approve the town warrant and recommend.
Second.
Having a first and second, motion.
To execute.
To execute, I'm sorry.
To execute.
To execute.
As presented, um, roll call vote.
Yes.
Tom? John?
Absolutely.
Carol?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Mr. Chair, can I make a, a motion to discuss and vote on the affordable housing issue tonight?
Uh, not at this time. We have a full agenda. We still have more items to go through, so we're going to hold off on that item.
Can we have a reason?
Uh, as the chair, I set the agenda.
Excuse me, Chair.
That's, that's not right.
I don't, I mean, if you want to talk about it later, but.
The, the only other reason is I'd like to make decisions when we have a full board. We don't have a, we're down a member.
David, we just made decisions tonight, important decision.
Because the town, the town warrant needs to be done, it's a priority. Doesn't stop them from doing business.
David, you don't even call us and tell us anything. You haven't called us.
Talk to us since you've been chair.
I find it very inappropriate.
Where are you going?
These people sat on the board, town paid, wore to have that meeting recorded. We paid out of taxpayers' monies to have that recorded, and you won't bring it?
It'll be heard.
Carol?
A full board?
Where, where are you going?
That's not right, David. That is not right.
Please don't heckle. Um, we need to maintain order at this meeting. We don't, we don't need people to interrupt um, the board's business. Moving on to communications, communications and correspondence. Uh, no, the, I'm all discombobulated. Old business, discussion, action.
Old business is.
We went through additional topics. Nothing. Town manager updates?
I have a liaison report. May I speak?
Carol?
The chamber is holding after hours tomorrow at the Gahoon Museum between 5:30 and 7:30. I do want to thank John Cotton for attending at least three new businesses that have opened up in town. I could not be there because they were during the day, and John made it a point to be there, and I thank him for that.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Not under liaisons, but before we get to the town manager updates, Mr. Chair, I, I would like to make a motion to be considered to add affordable housing for recommendation and vote for the, regarding the affordable housing meeting that was held last week.
I, I hear it, but I, you know, I'm not going to entertain it. I'm going to hold off until we have a full board. That's my decision on the matter.
I believe you're.
Moving on to town manager updates.
Is that within your scope of authority?
Chair, I believe you would be out of order.
As setting the agenda, it is my authority. I, I have the choice not to entertain the motion.
Mr. Chair, you have the right to set the agenda.
Correct.
But we have the right as seated board members to add things to the agenda if we have a majority. And there was a motion on the table to add something to the agenda.
Within my rights, it's to, to entertain the agenda, the motion or not. Is, is my, is my perspective on it.
You, I, I, I don't understand. This is a very bad awkward situation, but you have the right as an agenda, as a, as a chairman, to make the agenda. But we have all this equal authority at this board.
As the chair, you do. You, you have to accept.
I am making, no, I am making a motion. You, you don't have to agree, but I am making a motion that to add affordable housing to the meeting tonight with a potential vote of recommendation for their, for whoever we, whatever candidate.
I hear the motion. It can be entered into the record, and I, I have the choice not to entertain the motion.
I, I don't believe that's true.
Okay. Okay.
Is there clarity from the town managers?
First of all, I, I am not a lawyer. The only thing I would point out is I believe that you're referring to additional topics, and I quote in parentheses, "This space is reserved for topics that the chairman did not reasonably anticipate would be discussed," end of parentheses. Again, I'm not a lawyer. I've heard what the motion in the second was. I also know that the chair did not, I forget the terminology, entertain. On the basis of the additional topics, I would want to refer to legal counsel, and legal counsel's not here. I don't mean to leave you in a quandary here, but.
At this time, it's not a pressing issue that has to be heard tonight. The agenda was set. It can, this can be brought up and, and discussed prior to our next meeting.
It was on the agenda, you removed it.
It's not urgent, Carol.
But you removed it.
It's not urgent.
And I don't think that's fair. They have a meeting tomorrow night.
Duly noted. If we could move on to town manager updates.
Let me give you some good news.
We getting a raise?
From the Department of Environmental Protection, received today. Dear Mr. Collins, the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, Division of Municipal Services, has received the following complete set of documents for the reference contract as bid project manual, the required bid information requested in the division's July 14, 2022 correspondence authorizing permission to advertise in your formal request for authorization to award. You are hereby authorized to immediately award the above referenced contract to Robert B. Hour Company, Inc., 24 Great Western Road, Harwich, Mass. As the lowest responsible and eligible bidder. That is for one collection system, and there's a similar one with Robert B. Hour as well. And that's for collection and for the plant. The language is similar, except for the fact that it says you are authorized to immediately award the above referenced contract to Waterline Industries, 7 London Lane, Seabrook, New Hampshire, as the lowest responsible and eligible bidder in the amount of blah, blah, blah. And my understanding is this particular company that I'm not familiar with has done a lot of work in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for this type of project. And I know the consultant has been here all evening, and I don't know if you want to elaborate or whether the chair wants him to elaborate, but it's good news that was received today.
Excellent news. Um, we'll look forward to an update once they provide a project schedule. You know, once they get settled, we can put on a future agenda. Look forward to that presentation. Congrats. That is positive news. Except, was that the only?
That's it, sir. Except for the executive.
So at this time, I'd like to, I'd entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss strategy regarding to negotiations with um, non-union personnel, personal administration plan, and the following collective bargaining units. If the clerk would read the, there's usually a notice.
Let me read it, Tom?
You have to read the whole thing.
I move that the board convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing a strategy regarding negotiations with the non-union personnel.
Please quiet. We're still conducting business.
Related to the personal administration plan with the following collective bargaining units wherein open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town. Mashpee Permanent Firefighters Association, International Association of Firefighters, I A F F, Local 2519, Mass C O P, Local 324, Local, I mean, Unit A Patrol Officers and Detectives, Mass C O P, Local 320, Unit B Sergeants, Mass C O P, Local 477, Administrators, Unit C Police Lieutenants, Laborers Union, Laborers International Union of North America, L I U N A, Mass Public Employees, Local 21249, Administrators, Unit A Administrators, Laborers Union, International Union of North America, L I U N A, Mass Public Employees, Local 1249, Administrators, Unit B Administrators Service Employees, International Union, S E I U, A F L dash C I O, Local 888, Public Works, Unit A, Service Employees International Union, S E I U, A F L dash C I O, Local 888, Public Works, Unit B, Service Employees International Union, S E I U, Local 888, Clerical and Library Dispatchers Chapter, from which the board will not reconvene in open session.
Second.
Boom. Second.
Second.
Somebody.
Hearing a second, um, roll call vote to go into executive.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.